Cory Stetson.
All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Directors of Tacoma Public Schools this Thursday, December 8th, 2022, to order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. General Counsel, will you please call the roll?
Yes. President Bonbright?
Here.
Vice President Keating?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Stroger?
Here.
Director McElroy?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a call?
Thank you. And we don't have any student reps here tonight as far as I can see. Is that correct? Okay. Perfect. All right. Item five, adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions or additions to the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda, five zero. Item six, board reorganization. General Counsel, would you mind walking us through this?
Sure. I'll start by walking the board and those following in the room and at home through the process. The board reorganization process is a process spelled out by state law and the Board Policy 1210, which spells out the method and the procedure the board uses to elect new officers for the following year. So the way we're going to do this this year is we'll first call for nominations for the president to serve for the 12-year term. We'll have a roll.
Not 12.
12-month term. My goodness. 12-year term.
Job, Malik.
Oh, did we not tell you this?
Yeah.
That was terrifying.
Yeah. 12-month term. And we'll call for a roll call vote to determine if we have a candidate that receives the majority of the board vote for that presidential vote, they'll assume the office of presidency after the vote is concluded. We'll then call for nominations for Vice President. We'll follow the same process. We'll have a roll call vote at the conclusion of that vote. If a candidate receives the majority of the board vote, that has to be three or more, then that, at the conclusion of that vote, we have a Vice President. After that, we'll, if the board chooses, we'll have a deus reorganization. If there's a need for folk to exchange seats, it could be done now or it could be done at the next meeting. And then that'll be how we will elect officers for this 12-month term until December 2023. So if we're ready to go, I'll take this moment to call for a nomination for president to serve for the next term from December 22 to December 23.
I'll nominate Elizabeth Bonbright to continue on in this role of president.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. So we'll call for any other nominations first. Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. And this will be a roll call vote. So we'll go down the line. Director Leon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director, Vice President Keating?
Aye.
Okay. President Bonbright, I got it. Director Stroger?
Aye.
Director McElroy?
I also vote yes.
Got it. Okay. Well, congratulations, President Bonbright. You are President Bonbright again.
I appreciate the testimony.
Okay. We'll do the same process for Vice President. Do we have any nominations for Vice President for the next 12-year term?
I nominate Director Cory Stroger for Vice President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any other nominations for Vice President? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote for the same. Director Leon, how do you vote?
Yes, or aye.
That works. Still, Vice President Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Bonbright, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Stroger?
Aye.
Director McElroy?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
I wasn't sure if I was going to say yes or aye. I was confused.
We have a new Vice President. So on the agenda, we see Agenda Item Seven is deus reorganization. This can occur at the next meeting or it can occur here. In the past, we've had some folk exchange chairs. I'll leave that to you, President Bonbright.
So did you guys want to do that tonight or do you want to do it next time?
Rock, paper, scissors? Like, I'm good.
Technically, you took on the new roles, right?
Immediately, yes.
Right now, he's Vice President.
The way that you're sitting, you can keep your chairs. There's no formality to that space that you do. You are technically now the Vice President, Vice President. And so he just referred to you in the actions, for some reason, that President Bonbright, you could step out for the moment. Vice President Stroger, you know, by your seat, you are physically sitting.
Yeah, there you go.
Nice, nicely put.
So if folks feel you don't want to change?
Yeah, we'll do it next week.
Okay. Next board meeting, we will switch the order.
All right.
So thank you. And I just want to make a comment to the outgoing Vice President, Director Keating, and thank you so much for a absolutely stellar job of a year of intense commitment. We've been through a lot this year. So thanks again for all of your help and assistance and leadership during this past year. We'll also be in the legislative representative position, so it's a lot. So we appreciate you. I'd like a round of applause for, oops, I'd like a round of applause for Director Keating. Thank you.
Is this the princess wave?
Yes, that's it.
Renee was teaching us earlier.
And I'm sorry that Mark had to come all the way up here to get me to turn on my mic, but, okay. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. We are starting a new year, so that's, it's exciting. All right. So item eight, recognition of staff, students, and community. General Counsel, this is just your night.
I can see that. So today, for the month of December, we have one holiday in civic observance. This happens to be a state holiday. So again, we said this at the last meeting, this is one where the state of Washington adopts a number of state holidays that all school districts in the state are required to acknowledge and have the day off for staff and students. So the one for this month of December is December 25th, which is Christmas Day.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, eight point two, recognition of music educator Peter Briggs for earning the Dr. William P. Foster Community Development Award.
So a quick background piece. Lincoln High School teacher Peter Briggs, who I believe is with us this evening, was selected as the recipient of the Dr. William P. Foster Project Community Development Award for the Northwest Division, which encompasses five states. The Dr. William P. Foster Project is a collaboration of Music Education Alliance, including the National Board Association, College Band Directors Association, and Music for All. Foster Project serves band directors in underserved and under-resourced communities. Mr. Briggs first came to Lincoln High School in 2008 and has built a successful music program that centers students in the community. The Music Education Alliance noted that Mr. Briggs serves as a model for other teachers in underserved, under-resourced communities. He will be recognized in several national forums in December at the Midwest International Band Orchestra Clinic held at the McCormick Place in Chicago, Illinois. That'll be cold. And interviewed about his experience in the Tacoma School District, which will be shared with band directors across the United States in the coming months. And as a winner of this prestigious award, Lincoln High School will receive instruments, accessories, clinicians, and subscriptions courtesy of Con-Solmer Instruments, Yamaha Music Corporation, and KH America. So with that, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors recognize Peter Briggs for earning the award of the Music Education Alliance.
Would you like to come up and say a word? It's your opportunity. Have the last word.
Thank you. I just, it's, it's interesting. I was nominated for this award by a professor from Western Washington University and also a teacher in Seattle. And it struck me because I love what I do, but I don't always expect people to notice what's going on at Lincoln High School. So it's moments like this that cause me to reflect on the impact and to just, to step back from the work for a moment and kind of see in a different lens what has happened in the last 15 years at Lincoln, but also just in the greater community. For me personally, as the school district posted this on the website, just seeing the shares and the comments of students and community members from, you know, across my time in Tacoma is really affirming and heartwarming. And ultimately, it just makes me really proud to be a part of what we're doing here at Tacoma. Tacoma has invested so much in me and helping me get my feet on the ground in terms of advocating for equity and access to music education. The guest lectures I'm doing in the universities and the sessions I'm doing at national conferences is really a testament to the professional development I've received in Tacoma and how I'm able to then pay that forward, not just for our students, but also for the education community more broadly. And so as I'm heading out to Chicago, it's really a chance for me to speak about what we represent here in Tacoma and the work that we're doing for students. And it really just makes me excited to go to take the learning from that conference and to continue to invest that in our community here. So thank you for the opportunity to go out to Chicago and represent us. And thank you again to our school district for all the support for music education and for the kids we have here in Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, so much. We're so incredibly proud of you and also grateful to you for all the years and energy and talent that you have dedicated and time that you've dedicated to our students and our school district to make us all better. So thank you. We really appreciate you. And music is a critically important piece. As all the arts are fundamentally a component of how we teach here in Tacoma. So thank you very much for being such a leader.
My pleasure.
We're grateful.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Director Leon?
Yeah, Mr. Briggs, I've been to a lot of Lincoln events and know a lot of Lincoln students from those events that I do the sideline work on. But, and also some of my patients have been your students. So they've spoken very highly of you and I've seen just amazing energy from your, all your musical efforts there at the school. So thank you very much.
Director McElroy?
We're having a night. But honestly, I've been playing my instrument for 20 years and honestly, hearing the kids in fifth grade aspire to go to Lincoln for all the various reasons. But I love the fifth grade band students who are like, I'm going to play in the Lincoln band. And there's so many other great reasons to go to Lincoln. Go Apes, always. But it's, it's, it's really transpiring throughout the whole community. And I work with a lot of kids younger, the K through five. And my fifth graders who are in band, they just love your work and they can't wait to go there. So thank you for all you do.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Item number eight point three, recognition of WASTA 2022 Board of Distinction Award.
Good evening, President Bonbright and members of the board. My name is Catherine McCarthy, the Assistant Director of Communications here on behalf of our Chief Communications Officer. I'd actually like to share some information with our public tonight on our school board, about our school board earning the 2022 Board of Distinction Award. This award is given by the Washington State School Directors Association, the agency that supports school boards across the state. Our board was recognized for addressing opportunity gaps among, among the more than 28,000 students and developing an anti-racism policy. In the 2021-2022 school year, the board focused on identifying and challenging the structures and behaviors that may perpetuate systemic racism. The board, the board members drafted and later passed an anti-racism policy that incorporated feedback from district administrators and the district's equity policy review team and community groups. The board was also recognized for its focus on supporting the whole child. By leading the charge with policy decisions and leaning into our deep connections with community partners, our board helped to develop two programs that support students after school. Beyond the Bell for elementary schools and Club Beyond for middle schools. As a result, every one of our 36 elementary and 12 middle schools offers extended learning opportunities for our students to help them learn and grow. Congratulations to the Tacoma Public School Board for earning the 2022 Board of Distinction Award.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank the, on behalf of the staff for your leadership. Many may not have the opportunity to see how everything is connected together, right? So you set goals. You invest numerous hours every week, if not every day. You do not get compensated for all that time. You hear the pains, the successes, the struggles. You push us to help us get better. You understand the complexities and the nuances of every situation, or at least try to and make an effort to. And you don't settle. You don't settle that the status quo is enough, but you do that with grace and compassion and knowledge through hard work and dedication, a relentless approach that every student, every day matters. And so on behalf of the entire staff, because I imagine that you won't make your own comments, I want to thank you for your leadership and congratulate you. Not every board earns the Board of Distinction, and it is not just handed out. It is earned, and we are very proud of you. So congratulations, Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent and your team for helping us achieve what we've achieved and making us look good. So I appreciate that. All right. So staff report to the board. Oh, sorry. Nine superintendent's report, whole educator recognition.
We're going to start with Dr. Forrest Greek, recognizing a very important group of our teammates, our OPs and PT staff.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia and members of the board. So, good evening, and I'm so excited. Month of December, we are recognizing our OPPT staff. This is our Office Professional and Professional Technical Staff. So across the district, our OPPT staff play a critical role in the day-to-day functions in schools and districts across the district. It's with no surprise to most of our employees that OPPT staff are typically the first point of contact for most of our general questions and our needs. They keep, excuse me, they keep our schools running and assure that staff and students have the necessary tools and resources to be successful. And actually, behind the scenes right now, Kevin Medford and Mark Crapo in the back. They are here representing this amazing team across the district and just thank you for all that you do. Thank you for technical support, your wisdom, and your hard work. We are better together because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Greek. Couple of other teams here. Lincoln, some of our PTs.
That's awesome.
Helped us staff and, and this is a tilt-top heritage. You know, it truly takes everyone in the district. And it's such an honor just to take a moment to recognize. And I know we have to do it globally by groups, and there's no way to do it for every individual. But these truly are the frontline folks and other frontline team members at all different levels, at all different sites, playing so many diverse roles. But they truly are educators. They inspire people. They draw knowledge out of people. They connect people, and they make meaning. And so we're extremely grateful for them. So thank you. Couple of other updates. I've asked Mr. Williams, I've asked Ms. McCarthy to come up and discuss weather with us and give the, the board a little bit of a chance to understand in the public, how do we make these difficult weather decisions? So, Ms. McCarthy, can you take us through our process a little bit?
Yeah, I'm going to fill in a little bit for, for our Chief Operations Officer, Chris Williams. So we want to just talk a little bit about how inclement weather decisions are made and how they're communicated. You know, last week, we had kind of our first taste of winter weather for the school year. And, and we just want to walk the public through that. So for what, we look at weather forecasts, we look at road conditions, and we look at our building and grounds and regional status. So for weather forecasts, we actually have an inclement weather team. And they are on, was Chris coming up? You want to fill in? Oh, wait. Go back. Okay. Chris is going to, Chris is going to give all the details on what the inclement weather team does.
Chris started on a two-hour delay today.
Just to give some background information, this is just the thought process of how we make weather decisions for the district and the community. We have two teams, one internal and one external. Our internal team consists of 20 individuals representing numerous departments, safety and security, food services, facilities, athletics, a level of directors in education. And we have the external team, which consists of seven or eight people who actually drive around numerous areas in Tacoma and report back to our facilities teams. And they're, they can begin at 3:30 in the morning or four in the morning, or they're out there in the afternoon. And these are, this is the decision-making process. Obviously, we look at the National Weather Service, and we're monitoring that the entire day and throughout the night and into the morning. And also looking at the road conditions. And that, that deals a lot with our external team that drives around. And we know some of our biggest challenges are the side roads. So we can be clear on the main roads, but we get a lot of concern and contacts from the community members about the side roads. In addition to that, we have our buildings and grounds. And this consists of our custodians. And they usually start two hours before. So they can be out there at five in the morning, four in the morning, kind of removing the snow around our sites. And lastly, we look at regional status. I know we're in contact with a lot of other districts, and we weigh in on what they think and what the impacts of the weather is going to be. And also, it's very important to note that, if I, I don't want to misquote, but I believe we have 30% of our staff that lives outside of Tacoma. So they might have a greater impact where they're at and the weather conditions that might play an impact in them actually getting to work. So this is our process. And Catherine, I talk about our communications.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Now, next slide. All right. So all of our staff and our families listening, if you probably got a lot of information this last week when we had some delays and a cancellation. So these are the ways that we communicate out to families. So we update our district website and all of our school sites. If you went on our site during either the delay or cancellation, we'll saw, you saw a message pop up right in your face. Couldn't miss it. We also send, we also post messages on social media. So that includes our Facebook, our Instagram, and our Twitter. We send automated phone calls, emails, and text messages. So these messages are going directly to our staff and all of our families. This is just a couple notes here. Those messages take a little bit longer. That's, there's, we have a lot of messages that go out, so that system takes a little bit longer. So you may see something on the website or social media first, but those messages are coming. And I'll just, also just want to put a plug. If you didn't receive a message or a call or a text, notify your school and you can update your contact information. We want to make sure everyone gets that information. We also work with local news media. So we have a process for making sure that all of the radio stations and local news media who are making announcements on closures, that they get that information. So those are the ways that you can hear about it.
So I thought it was just important that, that we try to demystify. I know that, you know, one of my great responsibilities is, although I may not be responsible, I am held accountable. And so as a superintendent, I do have to make a difficult call. And I have to make a call of, do we cancel school? Do we keep school going? Do we do a two-hour delay? One of the things that's complex here is if, I'm sure if I asked folks, is, is it uncommon in the Pacific Northwest or the Puget Sound region to see snow, rain, sunshine, all on the same day? Folks would say, no, it's not really uncommon. And so we have this unique weather patterns that makes it even more complex. And we have what we call conversion zones. And so recognizing that we have staff members that is all over the place in the Puget Sound region, I think far away as Arlington, and, and we appreciate that. And even in Tacoma, you can see a portion of the town may be hit harder with weather than a different portion of town. Our goal is to try to make a decision to keep everyone as safe as possible. We recognize that that may feel differently. Do I feel safe to drive? Do I feel safe to send my student to, to school in those conditions? And we respect and honor that. We're continuing trying to improve our communications, even on delays. Take your time. Do your best. We'll work through that. I don't imagine that this will be our last snowy day for this year, or at least even in our future. And so the more that we can work through it and talk through it and do our best and stay connected. We try to make those decisions as fast as possible, but we also do have a responsibility to try to provide a safe place for learning during every day. And we are required to keep schools open to the best of our ability. Or the other response is, when will we make these days up? We will be communicating, because we do have to make the days up any day that we miss. And so we'll be communicating to our families very soon when that first snow makeup day is. We have some planned in the calendar. And then we'll continue to monitor, adjust, and plan accordingly. So I'll answer. Any questions on that topic from the board?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, I appreciate, I just, I guess my only comment is I appreciate the information because I know that, you know, sometimes if people only see information on social media and not actually directly from the source, and depending on where you live, like, things can look really different all over the place. And so I just think it's important as a reminder, especially the first snow that we have, because snow around here, like, is complicated. So I'm just really grateful. And I, and I know from previously serving on the Safety, Traffic and Safety Committee, like, getting some of these updates and having a deeper understanding was really helpful, just for me to be able to help community members understand. So I just appreciate the time that you're taking to share all of this. So thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? Oh, Dr. Leon?
Important to also think about the other reasons we had to cancel recently that some people didn't understand was the air quality. So just don't forget about air quality as a real important factor in health, too. And the reason these closures are happening are for, for safety. So air quality was an issue we dealt with and will deal with probably in the future. So it's part of the mix that you make your calculations on, your safety.
I just want to clarify, is this?
Outdoor quality.
And we were talking about past history experiences, not this last snow day, correct?
Yeah. No, just forest fire, air quality, and the outdoor airs.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, yes. And there are a variety of, thank you for sharing that. Snow is not the only reason, for natural reasons, why school may be canceled or delayed. And so we've had experiences, as Dr. Leon mentioned in the past, of forest fires and a variety of other impacts which may change our programming. And so thank you. I have a couple other quick announcements or updates. You know, we've started winter sports. We've started middle school sports again, but our winter sports are traditionally in gyms for most part, or pool areas, and gymnastics, and diving, and wrestling, and basketball. And I'm going to mention Miss One, so I'll just stop there. And I wanted to give you a quick update of where we are with some of our trainers, right? Because part of our, our athletes compete at a very high level, and we want to make sure that they're safe. We continue to work with Olympic Sport and Spine to help try to recruit additional trainers to be on-site for athletic competitions and ideally with practices and supports in there. We are not fully successful in that. Olympic Sport and Spine, I want to give them tremendous credit. They're trying everything they can to find people. The health careers profession is a very difficult one as far as a recruitment and building a pipeline. And the expertise is not something that you can just walk off to the street and just take one of those jobs. You have to be certified. You have to have advanced trainings in there. Currently, we have a number of qualified, trained medical professionals that are volunteering their time to provide coverage. And so the Student Life Office is trying to work with both Olympic Sport and Spine, as well as those volunteers to cover competitions and work it through the best coverage that we can. We're continuing to provide guidance to support our coaches, our athletes. If any family has, or an athlete, if they're hurt, first response is, is don't practice, don't compete. Go to your medical provider, provide that support, even if there is not a trainer on-site. So I don't want folks to, to miss the opportunity to understand as we haven't. Just because we may not have a dedicated one at a school, we have not lost our efforts to try to continue to fill that gap. Any questions on that one?
Thank you for that update.
And then my last one, and forgive me for the time. I do want to take a moment to thank our staff, our partners, and our families for your relentless support of our students. It's December. We're going into a holiday time. Sometimes those holiday times can be tough. Sometimes they can be full of joy and happiness for all different folks. And it's not lost on me that the efforts of our families, our partners, and all of our staff to try to support each of our students during these times, I'm extremely grateful for those partnerships at all different levels. And I just want to take a moment to wish each of them and all of you a happy holiday season. I hope you can find a moment where you can celebrate, have a moment of peace and happiness and some joy over the two weeks that we don't have school, and know that you are appreciated by the Tacoma Public Schools. That is my report. That is my report for the evening. Thank you, President.
Thank you. All right. Item number 10, Staff Report to the Board. Ten point one, Benchmark Report, Annual Partnerships, Volunteers and Organizations. And there is Amanda Scott Thomas.
Good evening, good evening, Board and Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent and beloved community. It's my pleasure, Amanda Scott Thomas, Director of the Community Partnership Office. I come to you guys a couple, twice a year to give you an update on our benchmark measures. And today, we're going to be talking about where we are so far in the year as far as volunteers and expanded learning opportunities, so formal partners. So it's my pleasure to provide that update for you. Slides. There we go. All right. So just to remind you, Goal Two of the District Strategic Plan is all about partnerships and we are committed to fully engaging parents, community, staff and young people in the education of our students. All right, so for this first quarter, these are the volunteer numbers. So these are the number of volunteers that have been processed from September to date. It's three thousand three hundred and seven. You will see that we are significantly above what we were around this time last year, so we're excited about that. Let's see, just a reminder, in that data, you saw that we had a significant decrease because of, again, school closures. Every year, about fifty percent of what we process happens through the, in the first quarter, so that September through October months was the bulk of our volunteers that get processed. I think it'll be a little bit different this year because this is a post-pandemic re-engagement, so people are slowly returning to volunteering in schools, but we've had great numbers trending upwards for this year. We've had two thousand and forty-three volunteers registered for this year. That's about sixty-seven percent of our goal for this year to, was to make a ten percent, I think, or an increase. And so we're sixty percent, sixty, about sixty-seven percent of the way there already, so we're excited about that. Changing in volunteer protocols, Governor Inslee ended the mandate for COVID cards for our volunteers, and so we lifted that on November the eighth. So the vaccine requirement is no longer necessary for volunteers in Tacoma Public Schools. That had to be communicated broadly, forms were changed, we revised and updated all of that. And so that is an update on volunteers. Our next steps as far as volunteers is that we have been working pretty closely this, this year and as in years past, but I'm excited to say that we're working in partnership with our Security Department again, because it's an interdepartmental responsibility as far as volunteers. And we did a cleanup on the watch system, and so we have internal staff that have access to background checks. And we went through and looked at our system, cleaned it up, you know, closed some of the users that were no longer in the district and determined who the volunteer coordinators were. Sometimes there was some turnover and that information wasn't updated. So we've, we've cleaned up our system. We have, we are also revising our forms. We are one of the only dish, there's like two districts that are still doing paper processes. We're moving to a centralized system, but we actually have an online fillable form now, so you can do all of your stuff online instead of having to come and print paper out to turn it in. Post-COVID, security and safety upgrades are happening through our Security Department and in partnership with security, we are implementing a Verkata guest security screen. I'm not sure if you, I'm sure you are aware that the Safety and Security have implemented some upgrades to the security system. Along with that, there is a volunteer component of that, so we'll be testing that out over the next couple of weeks to see how that works. That could change some things, how volunteer management is done here in the district, because that is all electronic, paper forms go away. So we're going to test that out, see what the implications are for that. So I'll be excited to let you know how that pilot goes. And then we're just going to continue to monitor our volunteers, make sure that those numbers are increasing, working with the Communications Team to do some more promotion and engagement to come back. Volunteering is now available in Tacoma Public Schools again, post-pandemic, and that COVID restriction has been lifted. This is the number of community-based organizations that have formal partnerships with the district. I report to you on this number every year. And something important to note, that this number represents the number of partnerships that were established that are new in a given year. So it does not represent the total number of expanded learning opportunities that we have. It is in that particular timeframe, these are the ones that were formalized. And by formalized, we mean we have a contract or an MOU. So we do work with informal partners where we don't have agreements. They may be coming in through a formal partner that's already in a building and they have worked that out between themselves. But for our, we, we track our formal partners, so those are, can be found in our database. So for two thousand twenty-one, that complete number for last year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, so that was September of two thousand and twenty-one till August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, there were forty expanded learning opportunities established. Some of those will last for one year, some of those will last for two years, some of those will last for three years, but those were, that's what was established in that school year. So at the end of the next year, or this time next year, I'll be talking to you about the number that we actually established for this school year. But that is the final number for last year. I did want to address that big number, I have to confess. We have been doing some refining of our data gathering. So you see that big jump when I pulled the report for expanded learning opportunities. We've been working with the Contracts Department. There is a box on the checklist that you fill out when you establish a partnership. Some people didn't know whether they qualified as an expanded learning opportunity or not, and so that box was checked. When I went back through all three hundred and sixty-six, I realized that they don't all qualify. So we developed a criteria and definition that is being implemented, people will know to check. I really do go through all of them to make sure, but that number is, that's why that number is large. It was a wrong number, and so you'll be getting correct data as far as those expanded learning opportunities that meet that particular criteria. And just to give you a reminder of what an expanded learning opportunity is by definition, it's a formal community partner organization that creates enriching experiences for youth before, during or after school and in the summer with activities that complement and support classroom-based instructions, instruction. Example of ELO programs include clubs, field trips, tutoring programs. And so those, when I talk about, when we talk about expanding learning opportunities, those are the type of partnerships that we report on and that we help to establish in the district. All right, we include this pie chart every year for you all, because the first year we did it, you loved it. It was an opportunity for you to see where all partnerships are established in the district. And so while our Partnership Office is charged with managing and reporting on partnerships for the district as a whole, you can see through this pie chart that the, that partnership is a value of the entire district and all departments have contracts and MOUs and established partnerships. So that just gives you a bird's eye view of where partnerships are emanating from within the district. All right. Key findings around this is that Partnership Office, again, reflects district partnerships. You saw the macro and the micro. Every year, we're responsible as a department for establishing new innovative expanded learning opportunities. And so far, for this school year, we've established four. Junk Box, which is a, a local tech, a community-based organization that does tech after school. They are, it's run by a man of color here in Tacoma, a local program. We work with expanded learning opportunity providers that are large and small, and we love when community creates programs for, for our students. So that partnership has been formalized. We've also established an expanded learning opportunity with Washington Trails. They provide education and resources to students to get into the outdoors. They do training, safety, they're just fabulous. The Tacoma, Tacoma Urban League has established a role within their organization that does parent engagement work. And so we formalized a partnership where we'll be working with their, their lead person on family engagement, which is Cherie Cook. She's a friend of Tacoma Public Schools, she used to be a volunteer in the Washington State PTA. Great person and doing good work in the community, and so we formalized that partnership. And we were able to give that program some ESER funding, because they're doing a lot of prevention work and just really good stuff. There's that information and that partnership is located on the database. If you want to see what any of these look like, they're all public information. Then we also established a MOU with the Washington National Guard. This was established or initiated by one of our principals. And you might see next year, we didn't get all the paperwork done in time for there to be like a tomahawk landing somewhere. Don't panic legal. We went through all the process and that may happen sometime in the future, but we have a great relationship with the Washington Army National Guard and that was, actually came out of the hotel team that we went and took a tour of, of, of the base and it was, it was very cool. So there may be some stuff coming out of that relationship, I think, in two thousand twenty-three.
Ms. Scott, we had a chance to co-fly some drones.
Yes, we did.
Do you think we'd be eligible between the two of us to fly the tomahawk or rappel out of it?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're on your own, Josh. All right. So those are the four. There's still some in the works, they're in process, and I'll be reporting to you next time I'm in front of you of some more expanded learning opportunities that we're establishing. Some exciting work, next steps. Our Superintendent established, I'm so excited about this. You know, we do the Superintendent's Quarterly Breakfast with Parents and Josh wanted to add this year, some gatherings for the business community as well as faith leaders. So we've, we're doing that twice a year. We hold, held our first one, it was very successful, got a lot of interest from community to partner and support and come together. While we're not owning that work, we have a seat at the table because community solutions, I believe, reside in community. So we'll be at these community tables with them as they come together as a coalition to create ways to support Tacoma students. So I have more to share with you later in the year about the, the results of that convening. We'll have another one in April with the business leaders and the faith leaders, and it was great. We had CTE department represented. It was a multi-interdepartmental event and just established some great relationships. So I'm looking forward to sharing the fruit that comes out of that. We're also working with the Communications Team to update our, our external web spaces, the Get Involved page, the Family Engagement page and the Community Resources for Families. We are streamlining all of that. As you know, we don't really upkeep a, like, a resource page, because resources change all the time, but things that are sent to us, we definitely want to share with our families. And there's some consistent resources that we are, you know, sharing links where families can go and get support. So we're working really closely with Communications Department to do that. And then we're continuing to work to revamp and automate our volunteer process to make that easier, again, for communities to get in schools and make sure that we're following all safety protocols, but we're streamlining. That work continues. And so those are my updates. Anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a clarification question. So on that slide that showed that forty was the, a number from last year.
Yes.
And you'd mentioned that those were new. So how many existing ones continued? So was it the forty plus whatever was already in place?
No.
So that it's just forty total?
It's just forty total that were established in that particular school year.
Okay.
Yes. And because they, some of them roll over and some of them end, and sometimes it's, you know, based on funding, it may be a grant opportunity, so we don't, we, we know how long they last, but I'm reporting on the ones that were established and are new during that school year.
And, and I'm wondering, since we have the new Beyond the Bell and we're working with our colleagues at Green Trike and at Metro Parks, that they, folks that are actually providing services may actually not be contracting with us, so they're not getting counted as part of the ones generated by this, in this forty?
So they may not be getting counted, they are not getting counted in this particular group. So it's outside of Green Trike, but I know that Green Trike, they have their own measure and you can get that report on who those partners are. And some of them are in common.
Right. And I just, I just want to make that point because I think that there is, since we've got on, in all of our elementary schools.
Yes.
You know, we've got a lot of community partners coming in and providing, you know, art services or.
Yes.
Maths, STEM programs, et cetera, and they're probably not part of that forty since they're run through the Beyond the Bell.
Yes.
Partnership.
And some of these, again, because they're expanded learning opportunities and it's kind of a broad definition, they may be one-time events like Student Government Day.
Got it.
Right?
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions?
Not a question, but just also like a huge thank you to you. I know the work that you do is tireless and time-consuming because I see you all the time. And I just want to thank you for the work that you've been doing for so many years. I was at the, when I was speaking at the SOA Conference, there was like a picture from twenty twelve and it was you was in the middle of a room of people and it's just kind of like the work that you've been doing for so long, it culminates in these presentations you get to us, but at the end of the day, just thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I celebrated my ten-year anniversary with Tacoma Public Schools. Love you guys.
Um, I just want to comment on the listening sessions that were done and I know I'm, we talked about them at the last board meeting, but they were really impactful and I know Director Stroger, Vice President Stroger and President Baumright and I were, really got a lot out of just participating and listening and being there. So I'm just grateful for that work because I think the intentionality of being in conversation is really important. So I just want to acknowledge your, your team, because I know you have a team.
Yes, I have a great team.
You do have a great team.
Victoria and Rin that are making these things happen.
And I echo what Director McElroy also said, so.
Thank you. And I appreciate the board for showing up, you guys being in the room when these events and things are happening, people do notice and we have a very active board, so I appreciate you too.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Go team.
All right.
All right, thank you so much, Amanda.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven, Members of the Public Wishing to Address the Board. Before I go through this whole long thing, is anybody, we don't have any written comments, I know, but do, is anyone here ready to speak? And if so, I can continue, but.
We haven't received any oral comment or written comment.
Okay, then we will just move on. Okay, item number twelve. The Consent Agenda. I have a motion for the Consent Agenda.
I move to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any comments on anything on the Consent Agenda or, okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the ayes have it, five zero. Consent Agenda passes. Item thirteen, Policy Matters. All right, we're back to our General Counsel, who has just been very busy today. So thirteen point one, Second Reading of Revised Policy Two Three Three Six, Holidays and Civic Observances.
Yes, District's General Counsel recommends that the Board adopt the revised proposal of Policy Two Three Three Six.
Okay, so this is the second reading. We had this last board meeting in November and in between that time, we've had a public comments from the webpage and other places come in. We also had a meeting with the Tacoma, with our own Equity Policy Review Team, and it was a very robust and I would say very informative and kind of exciting conversation that will, I think, inform some of the work that we're doing as a board going on, just keeping, keeping mindful of, you know, what, what this policy does is really talk about what's legally required and what's legally recognized by the federal government and the state government. And, and if we add something in that we are recognizing every month, it's because it's something that's aligned with our, our goals, our board goals and our strategic plan. But some of the comments from the advisory committees were like, well, okay, so Christmas Day, but what about, you know, Hanukkah, what about the other holidays? And it's one of those things where, because this is about what's, you know, what is the law of the land versus just arbitrary, we actually, it gave us pause. And so we had this really great conversation about being able to see all cultures and, and people from whatever, wherever they come from, religious or otherwise. And we don't have an answer, because that isn't what this actually is doing now, but it is, gives us something to think about, about ways that we can help make sure that every single one of our students and staff and families are seen and appreciated and acknowledged however they show up. And so I guess we're asked, I'm asking that we pass this so that we can actually move forward with this, but then we bring this conversation to some, to all the other work we do about how do we recognize, you know, the things that aren't in the statute? And not just, because if you start the long laundry list, then you're going to leave somebody out and how do you do that with being fair? So it just, it was a very robust conversation and I so appreciate. So it just, it was a very robust conversation and I so appreciate the members of the Equity Policy Review Team for always having us, taking us to the next level on these conversations. So, thank you. And I think the comments, some of the comments they made are incorporated into the second reading piece in private. Anybody, General Counsel, do you, Ben Ro, do you have any comments based on the conversation that we had with the group?
Just briefly, I would reiterate the appreciation we have for the members of the Equity Policy Review Team. This is a group of community members that volunteer their time to meet with us to basically review the policies that we bring to you, to check it for tone, check it for the way it hits the ear, how does the community feel about these changes? So I also second that. I really appreciate their feedback. Every time we meet with them, we learn something new. What President Baumright said about the policy itself, if you look at that first page of the holidays and civic observances, the thing I would add to your comments is if we vote to adopt this policy, it will have the effect of retiring the holiday policy that we've had because a lot of that language has been brought into this policy and then updated, updated as to be most current. So you'll see some of that update reflected in some of the holidays that the state of Washington has adopted in the RCW. The one that's been most recently adopted that just now incorporates is Juneteenth, which is now a state legal holiday, which it didn't use to be. This means that the district, both staff and students, this is a non-workday for them. And then the part that's underneath is what Director Baumright's talking about. These are civic observances and instructional observances where the state of Washington is saying, we're going to recognize these days. And then teachers, principals, here are some instructional pieces. Please instruct about the state constitution, please instruct about certain days. So this combines both things, both the state holidays that are non-workdays and non-schooldays and then those legislative recognized days and then the instructional days as well. So this is one place where we can have all those required holidays and observances in this one policy.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'd move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Ben Ro, do we do, is it a, is it a resolution or is it a policy? No, we don't have to.
Just vote.
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure I wasn't forgetting something. All right, it's been moved and seconded. No further comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes have it, 4 to, 5 to nothing. Okay, so we're going on to item 14, financial report. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for February 23rd, 2023. Amazing that we're saying that. And if anyone is interested in the public to look up the financial statements, they're always available on our website at https dot, I mean, colon, backslash, backslash, www.tacomaschools.org, backslash departments, backslash business and finance. Okay, item 15, curriculum and instruction. Item 15.1, approval of the interlocal agreement number TSD-22-270 with Columbia Virtual Academy.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Columbia Virtual Academy interlocal agreement, TSD 22270, with an estimated income of $200 per year, funding source assessment.
I move to adopt item 15.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. Hey Zeke, I was wondering, I was looking up this academy and things like that. So we have students who live in our boundaries but are participating in an online academy that's placed somewhere else in Washington State.
Correct.
And because they live here, but they're doing an online learning, but it's not our Tacoma Online, it's a different?
Correct.
Okay, that's where my mind, okay. That makes sense.
Okay, any other questions?
I was a little lost.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Zeke. All right, item 16, business matters. 16.1, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment Number One to the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Skanska USA Building Incorporated for the Bryant Montessori K-12 School Replacement Project.
Just quickly, wanted to provide some additional information for the public. We typically see two GMPs for a site. The first one deals with the design process, which is known as pre-construction services, and the second one, which we bring to the board, deals with the total construction cost and which the vendor is not to exceed. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, which states the cost for the Bryant Montessori K-8 School Project and authorize a superintendent or designated to sign said amendment in an amount of $3,818,815 excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt item 16.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns for this item? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Thank you. Item number 16.2, approval to award Wayne Roofing for the Hunt Round Building Roof Replacement Project.
This is part of the process of converting Hunt Round Building into a community center. Currently, our anchor tenant is Tacoma Arts Live, in which they will construct a stage within the facility and have live performances and also have student involvement. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent and/or designated award Wayne's Roofing for the Hunt Round Building Replacement. The total award amount is $900,000 excluding tax.
I move to adopt item 16.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Chris. All right, so other business, item 17, very exciting. 17.1, approval of the resolution proclaiming January 2023 as Tacoma Whole Child Month. Welcome Laura Allen.
Good evening. With excitement, January, yes, is Whole Child Month. And we had a few slides, I believe, if they're available, just to say very quickly, what is the whole child? There we go. So in a nutshell, what is a whole child? There they go. All right, so our big hairy audacious dream, our vision is that students are supported 24/7 when they are scholars in school with us, when they are thriving and participating in after-school and community programs, when they're home with families and when they move about in their neighborhood, that all of us, the village, are wrapping around to care for the children in Tacoma. A whole child is healthy, safe, engaged, challenged, and supported. And that means that every student enters school healthy and learns and practices about well-being. Every student learns in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe, that they have a, it is respectful and friendly for both students and adults. Every student is actively engaged in learning and feels connected to school and the broader Tacoma community. Every student is challenged, that we see the best in them, that we hold them to high standards. They're challenged academically and prepared for success in college and employment and to be a global citizen. And that every student has, every student is supported by caring and qualified adults. So we do this because in the blink of an eye, our students are going to be the leaders of Tacoma. And they, they will be great. So with that, I share.
Director Allen, just real quick, before we move into the proclamation, understanding and recognizing that this is such a critical fiber of the DNA of Tacoma Public Schools and that we have focused on the whole child for the last decade plus, before you read the proclamation, I would like to invite Superintendent Garcia, President Baumright, members of the board to make a few comments, if you would like to. You're not put on the spot, but this really is significant and the fact that we're declaring an entire month, Whole Child Month, let's give it its due diligence.
Well, I'm going to step up and say here, because just to set the stage, for if you have not seen Newsweek from November 18th, 2022, so just a couple of weeks old, this is a declaration and a statement of what works in Tacoma, public schools with our whole child approach and our whole educator approach. It's the, it's the cover story and it says, "Science Reveals Why Teen Depression Is Soaring and How Schools May Be Making It Worse." And you first think, oh no, and you start reading and you get about a paragraph in and they say, but there's this oasis of hope in this country and it's Tacoma, Washington. And literally, the entire article is about what is working in Tacoma. And so it's all about the whole child work that Dr. Garcia and Dr. Santorno, our two superintendents and deputy superintendents, brought to this community 10 years ago, 12 years ago, I'm losing track now, but a decade. And it's been a decade of dedication, of building on what Laura Allen was just sharing with us about that, you know, community work. And I think that's why collaborations work in Tacoma and it's because our community cares about our kids and thinks about them holistically, how we can all support them. So it's just interesting that we got this, this coverage and the article is really telling about why it's working in Tacoma and it's the Whole Child Initiative, which is really making this happen. So thank you to, you know, Superintendent Garcia for bringing it to us in the first place and Laura Allen and your team for helping implement it. I think also as a board, we have continued to make this a priority within our goals and our strategic plan and that mental health is, has been a major issue on our radar screen and we're working very closely with the superintendent and the community to try and address this. So I just want to say, you know, that we are really grateful that we have this program, but also that there are kids that don't live in our school districts and who also could benefit from this work. And so I think declaring Tacoma Whole Child Month for January is an awareness, so for other districts that can look into this. And also I think we're pushing the governor to do a Whole Child Month for the state too as well, and I'm not sure if that's going to happen, but anyway, so that's my comment. Anyone else? Director Leon.
I'd like to add on to that, I think, just to give a positive, more examples about the mental health piece, the Oakland and Mount T school-based health clinics that we have, I've got firsthand reports from the doctors that have been working there, that they have gotten so many amazing referrals and brought students in. The staff members in those schools and other schools have brought students in, not just for sports physicals, right? And in a sports physical, you actually find out that some kids are sad, depressed, suffering from something, mental health issues. They brought them in for many mental health concerns, but then some of these kids would probably not have seen a physician or a provider for these things, maybe ever, maybe for months, but with the staff trained to identify this, bring them into those two health centers, I think it's a wonderful opportunity and it's been life-saving, I know, for many, potentially for many of these students. So hopefully we have a chance to expand to other partners and all of our high schools at some point. Thank you, Dr. Garcia and your team.
Do you want to go first?
I got you. Okay. So I had a really good experience with the Tacoma Whole Child. I mean, it was Amanda Scott Thomas who brought me into this room in October 2019 and I was awarded a Gold Star Community Partner for my Whole Child work, but I will also take a step back and say, as an early learning provider, for 17 years, we've been pushing these agendas of seeing kids for who they truly are, loving them, growing with them and accepting them as they walk through the doors. I think that when Tacoma expanded its reach into the before and after-school market in a really intuitive and intentional way, it opened the door for so many more people with lived experience and with lived expertise to come into our schools and build this bridge. And that's what a Whole Child Initiative is. We're bringing in everyone, we're supporting everyone and everyone's brought to the table. I love the work we did with parent partnerships back in 2016 and I wasn't even here, right? But in 2016, I got to see that work firsthand as a teacher in our school district and see the outreach that we were doing, our communications department, the staff, HR, everybody was hands-on deck to bring everybody to the table. And so that's what being a Whole Child District is, from the bottom up and wrapping around, that's just who we are and what we do. So I'm appreciative for this. We should be pushing it. We should push Governor Inslee so he can recognize all kids deserve to have what Tacoma kids have.
Director Keating.
I would add also as a Gold Star Community Partner.
Which now I like can't remember what year that was, we don't need to recount it, but
I have a shiny plaque in my office.
With a star?
I know, it literally has a star on it. I want to say about the Whole Child that as a parent, my introduction to the district was through the Whole Child. And my now senior in high school was in kindergarten and the Whole Child was just beginning. Like the conversation, like the idea, the concept, the vision of it. And then, I mean, it was such a draw as a parent. And then being invited in, like I have found opportunities where I was invited in by the district to participate. And, you know, I was invited in in 2011 to participate in the harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy process of updating that and as a parent and a community partner. And I think that as Superintendent Garcia always says, it's not perfect, we are not perfect, and there is this continuum of striving to get better, do better, be better. And I just am really grateful because I see in the ways that our students have and continue to express and articulate their experiences, what they, their perspectives, like that's a part of the culture. And I think that the thing that is inspiring to me about the Whole Child and from its beginning inception is this idea of changing culture and climate. And that does not happen overnight. And so to see my child's entire K-12 experience has been, the Whole Child has been a part of that and interwoven into that as a student and then as a family. And so I'm grateful to just continue to be a part of that and support just the momentum and the continuation of it.
Yeah, and I have one point to add to that, which is that it's also reflected, not just in the way that we all, you know, are speaking about, but also from the kids' perspectives, just, you know, the restorative justice approach and peer partnerships where they, you know, peers are helping each other to grow out of bullying and out, you know, it's one of those things that it's making the difference. And that's one of the things that the Newsweek article alludes to is that the, our data is showing, you know, our graduation rate is going up and our, you know, our numbers of kids accomplishing high levels of class and coursework and CTE programs and getting really engaged are just going higher and higher and the rest of the country is really struggling in some of those same areas. And so, and you have to say why? And you look back and this program is the fundamental component that is, you know, kind of giving us that leg up. So, did you have anything you want to say, Director Stroger?
Vice President.
Vice President Stroger, boy, I missed it.
I like that.
I like it too.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I just want to, you know, I guess we're ready to read the resolution, but you can tell we're all very excited about.
Josh, you don't want to say anything?
Oh, superintendent. Absolutely.
He tried to shrug it off.
He did. Shred, shred.
It's powerful to be a part of a community that takes a moment to take a step back and say, it's not a program. It's an alignment of a series of programs. It is mental health and it's not mental health. When you take that pillar of engagement and you hear Mr. Briggs, Mr. Briggs is a Whole Child champion. Of course, everything in this world is connected to everything else. But when you have that first slide of a four-shift of a level of a community with an intentionality that says, these are our children, this isn't a new concept, whether it's ancient proverbs. And I remember sitting in this room and way back when, when the board at that time was discussing, could we even roll out things like an SEL curriculum? And kind of like the snow, there's opportunities where you're held accountable, but not responsible. The Whole Child movement is all of ours. It's every educator's opportunity to make a choice. Do I step in and up or do I step out? For community partners, for families. And it's also, and the greater neighborhood, a recognition that one is not more powerful than the other, that we have to all work together. And it looks different for every child and every family. And certainly it doesn't work because we know that what happens in life. And certainly, it doesn't work because we know that what happens in life, the good, the challenging, sometimes the traumatic, it's how we come together to respond that we never arrive. And why the proclamation and the resolution is so important is that as public officials, as adults, as municipalities, we should have the courage to say, these are the things that we value for every child. And if we're not challenging them academically, we're not doing our work. And if we're not supporting them, we're not there yet. And so I'm honored to sit with you. I hope that you take the initiative to adopt. I hope our partners do. And I hope that we recognize that the moment that we don't do this as a community in January and restate our commitment, I think we should pause. I think we should pause and ask, so what are we doing? And we can come up with a phrase like our children are our future and this. But if we, as adults, don't work together under a very simple approach to say, we may not agree on everything, but we truly are better together when we come together with intentionality, with programs, with resources, with compassion, with shared understanding, and not take credit and not tear each other down, but work together to build and model, I feel optimistic. And there's a lot of days where I don't feel optimistic looking around. And so I'm honored to sit with you and serve with you. And you have my commitment that I will bring everything I've got to that as long as we can keep these things beacons of our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so are you ready to read the resolution?
Yes, with joy. Whereas each student deserves to be challenged academically, experience a comprehensive education that promotes critical thinking and creativity, and be prepared for higher education, meaningful employment, both in our global economy as well as lifelong success. And whereas every student has a right to be supported on their journey of becoming compassionate and kind by educators who are qualified caring adults and have access to personalized learning opportunities. And whereas every student has the right to learn about and practice a healthy lifestyle in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe, to be empowered to advocate for social, physical, and mental wellness of themselves and of others, to take advantages of resources for healthy well-being, and to be hopeful about the future. Whereas every student has a right to opportunities to discover their passions, to be curious, to love learning, to be actively engaged in and connected to school and the broader Tacoma community. And whereas every student has a right to access educational experiences where they develop the skills, the knowledge, and the courage to identify and confront personal, systemic, and societal bias. And where every student has a right to access in-school and extracurricular community-based programs that provide students with experiences relevant to their individual passions, their career, their civic, and higher educational goals. And whereas every student has a right to attend schools that are safe, that are inclusive, anti-racist, welcoming, respectful, and supportive of their development as critical thinkers who contribute to and collaborate with our global and natural world. I now therefore request that you proclaim January 2023 to be Whole Child Month in Tacoma. And I encourage all people in our state to join us in this special observance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution.
I have to read the recommendation real quick.
Oh, shit. You should have done that hours ago, Lisa. She's so picky.
So picky. The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Director of Whole Child recommends that the Board of Directors proclaim January 2023 as Tacoma Whole Child Month and encourage community partner municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for a Whole Child approach to educating and serving the children of our community.
Thank you. Now?
I move to adopt the resolution proclaiming January 2023 as Tacoma Whole Child Month.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I would like the General Counsel to call the roll.
Okay.
Unless, well, I guess I should say, does anybody have any comments or questions? We've talked enough.
I think we started backwards.
I think we've talked enough, yes. Go ahead.
All right. Director Leon, how do you vote?
Aye, yes, yes, yes.
Director Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Bonbright?
Aye.
Vice President Stroger?
Aye.
Director McCullough?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Now we get to pressure all of our friends, and I love that.
Yep, I love it. All right, well, thank you, everyone. This is a great way to end a meeting. All right, so we don't have any student reps here, so I will turn to the board. And who wants to speak first about what's been going on for them?
I'm going first because then it's done, you know? So on Monday, I went to the Mount Toma varsity basketball game, girls' basketball. And it was a nail-biter. It went into overtime, and they won 42 to 40. It was a very stressful game. And I do not do sports at all. Like I normally, I always go to watch the cheer teams at all the schools. I'm like, oh, my God, look at them go. And the girls at the varsity, the varsity-level girls at Mount Toma really inspired me. And they were pushing through the whole time. And then last week, I was at Lincoln High School's basketball, girls' basketball program, speaking to the girls about using their voice and helping and supporting others. And they were speaking about Whole Child to me, letting me know how it works at their school, and everybody has each other's back. So it's kind of funny that we just voted on it, and the kids were letting me know that they already know what's up, and they're already doing it. Those are really my only board comments and reports, and I'm just really proud of all the teams. But Lisa Keating, or Director Keating, you brought up, I think a month or two ago, just supporting like all the different types of athletics and all the sports teams. And I was inspired by that comment, and I went and I did it. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. All right, Vice President Stroger?
All right, I got a whole bunch of stuff. So I had to write some stuff down because if I don't, I'll forget. First, September 17th through the 19th, I got to go to Spokane with Vice President Keating, Director Ke...
November, not September.
November, yeah, November. My bad. Hey, hey, take it easy. Yeah, November, for the WASDA Conference, Washington State School Directors Association. And the theme was belonging. Now, WASDA brings folks together, school board directors together, and some superintendents, if I understand correctly, from across the state to offer professional development and training programs in one space. Really developed to maximize leadership and governance abilities and improve student learning. So got to go there. And conferences are great, but all of the real ones know that they'll work in the hallway. And had a great deal of opportunities to connect with folks, network with like-minded school board directors from across the state. And we got to also participate in a few different breakout sessions. My favorite, I'm stealing this because I know you probably got it written down too. Dr. Adolf Brown's a world-renowned clinical psychologist.
Neuro.
Neuroscientist.
Correct.
So when I talked to him, he said he got a whole bunch of degrees, and he all day told me what he does. But I will tell you that his keynote was built upon this idea of not judging my exit by my entrance. And so he came all dressed in, I mean, I can't remember what year it looked like, but he had like this wig on with his hair and this long white t-shirt, pants sagging. And he walked around prior to while everybody was kind of gathering. And I guess he was trying to see who was going to interact with me, who's going to say anything, because I don't look like the people in this room. And then he had his son actually go on stage and pretend to be him. And everybody thought that his godson, who had on a suit and was clean-cut, was Dr. Adolf Brown until he got on stage and said, actually, I'm Dr. Adolf Brown, don't judge a book by its cover. And it was amazing to see like some of the faces in the room. And I'll be honest, I was one of them, right? When he came down, ah, Director Keating was looking at me like, I wish you could see your face right now. Because it was just, okay, I could get into detail about why, but I'm not going to. I just felt like there was a lot of shucking and jiving going on, like let's get to the, let's get to it. So anyway, he got up there and did an amazing presentation, and then also had a follow-up breakout session, which was, which was great as well. Anyway, it was great. I see the Interscholastic Activities Committee, I got elected to then. We had our first meeting, and it was interesting trying to do that meeting at 5:00 in a basketball gym where my daughter's practicing basketball. It was interesting, but it was fun. We got a lot of stuff that I need to share with y'all, so keep that noted. I visited Truman Middle School again. Dr. Stout and Vice Principal King took me on a tour of the school. We got to pop into a different, a few different classrooms. But I learned that one of the district's most senior staff members worked there, and she's a math teacher. And she told me what year she started teaching. I can't remember. But what I can tell you is that when I visited her classroom, I could tell that the zeal and the fire and the excitement that she had on her first day still exist today. She said, I don't have any dreams or desires of retiring. And I'm like, well, you teach math. Like, it's not one of my strengths, but she loves it. Like, kids were engaged and dived in, so that was, that was exciting to see. But we talk about Whole Child and like the many pieces that build that up. And I got to see that in action. So we stood in the hallway. There's a desk on the bottom floor of Truman in the middle hallway. Apparently, Dr. Stout used to sit there during passing times. You don't see there anymore because there's no chair, but that's where we huddled. And students would walk by. Every single student that walked by Dr. Stout or Vice President King that came up for a fist bump or a high five was called out by name. And when I tell you that you could see, their eyes light up by being recognized by the name that their parents gave them, not a nickname, not a what's-up, kid, but by their first name. And that empowered them, right, to go to the class. And another thing that's exciting, before the bell rang, you could hear a pin drop in the hallway, which is like, I'm not used to seeing that. So I'm like, y'all knew I was coming, so you tried to hoop people up or something? I don't know. But anyway, I guess it's a common practice. So it was beautiful, man. It's something powerful for a student to be seen. So I just want to take my hat off. I would if I didn't get a bad haircut. But take my hat off to Truman staff and the team over there for the great work that they're doing. Two more things, Traffic Safety Committee. I popped in to that, was it yesterday? And something exciting is happening. One key thing I want to put on folks' radar, communications are about to start rolling out, but in neighborhoods in our city, the speed limit is going to drop from 25 to 20 miles per hour. So you're going to see billboards, you're going to see mailers, and all other kind of communications coming from the city, letting people know. If I jumped the gun on sharing that, I'm sorry, but I definitely popped into that meeting and got that gem, so I wanted to be the one to share. So yeah, that'll be happening at the top of 2023, just so folks know. Finally, Narrative Changers took place yesterday. We took our challenge to the Star Center.
Want to explain what that is?
Yeah, sure. Narrative Changers is a group of individuals who decided that we wanted to empower young people to change the narrative within their schools, right? Give them the tools and the strategies necessary to do so, and let them take ownership of it. So we meet once a month at one of our local community centers or event centers. And huge shout-out to our families and the students that showed up, right? It's not really a whole bunch of people that come, but the people that show up really get what they're looking for, which is amazing. We had some special guests in the building. Director Keating was present. Mike Rupert pulled up yesterday and shared, he shared about the care behind the work of safety and security. And I could tell you it was well-received. Folks were asking questions, folks were engaged, so it was beautiful to see. And I had the opportunity to share about a framework championed by Stephen Covey called Have Do Be, but I flipped it to Be Do Have. And it's a framework in ways that really helps folks, you can apply it to your life and really get ahead, right? Depending on how you use those three words. So had a really good time. Just look forward to this every single month, and there's going to be more to come. So that's my extremely long board report. Please don't get used to that. Thank you for your time.
So Vice President Stroger, are, how are we going to be announcing the next meetings of the Narrative Changers?
Interestingly enough, we have an Instagram and Facebook events. And we actually, at every single meeting, we have folks leave their emails on their flyers and leave it on the table. We collect that, put it into a Google Forms, and then we send out reminders via email as well.
So if someone's interested in starting to come, they just need to look where?
I would say just go to Facebook and look at, type in Narrative Changers or Instagram, NC253.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add that it went out in the e-family newsletter, so we are sharing that information as well.
I didn't know that. Thank you. Surprised to me. Thanks a lot.
Awesome, great. Thank you for that, and thank you for doing that work. All right. Former Vice President Keating?
I'm going to be long-winded too. So let's see, since the last, I think a couple of days after the last board meeting, I got to spend time at Jenny Reed, which was really amazing and fun. And then at Foss, I feel like this was just last week, but Joe Coy came, a former Falcon, and his sister and his best friend, who is also married to his sister. I believe that's how that worked. But Joe, they came and presented a scholarship amount. And what I was told, and I've seen conflicting information, so I may not be accurate, but what my understanding is, is it's a $30,000 annual scholarship for five years. That's what Joe's sister had told me it was for the arts, for students at Foss. And none of them had been back to Tacoma or to Foss since they graduated in 1989. So there was a really amazing assembly, and the Foss students did an amazing job. There was a Family Feud event game that happened, which was epic. And it was really an amazing opportunity to just watch, watch Joe, who is this, like, hugely famous comedian, talk about where he started. And he had a film crew there, and I was able to stick around and follow. I mean, there was a whole group of us following him around, and talk about the one spot and the teacher that helped him get his start. Because he was a kid in school that really couldn't keep the humor inside during class. And so there is the, and I'm forgetting the teacher's name, but the, she would allow him at like the last 10 minutes of class, he could do his stand-up at the last 10 minutes. If he sat through class and kept it all inside, then at the last 10 minutes, he could have this moment. And it really has formed, just formed a lot of his career and life, and he had his own son there. So it was really, it was amazing. It was a super-inspiring, cool experience to watch some people who have the ability to give back in really big ways do so to a place that really formed them. So that was pretty special. Then, I think the night before that, there was the Pierce County Superintendent's Annual Meeting that President Bonbright and I were at, along with Superintendent. And then huge shout-out to the Narrative Changers. That was an amazing event. And I wanted to also echo comments for Mike Rupert. I think that as we were having the conversation around safety and security back in the early parts of COVID, Mike, what I heard from you last night was that you embody what I believe we were aiming to achieve through what, through safety and security in the ways that students would feel safer and protected. And so it was just really, it felt like a full-circle moment to listen to you talk last night. And so I just wanted to really thank you for carrying out a really complicated and nuanced aspect of safety for our students. So I just wanted to echo that. And then feel like there was, oh, and then, so WASDA, the WASDA Conference was really great. And yes, a lot of the really deep conversations do happen in the halls. And so the other person that I wanted to highlight, in addition to Dr. Adolf Brown, who, when you talked about being seen in Truman, like that was essentially what, the essence, right? Seeing students, knowing our students by name, and the importance of that, like was very much part- part of his, um, keynote and workshop. Um, the other amazing keynote that was there is the, um, twenty twenty-three Washington State Teacher of the Year, Jared, um, Cope, I believe is how his last name is pronounced. Um, he is, um, a teacher in North Thurston, um, and he's the native, um, student specialist. And his keynote had a similar impact in terms of the kinds of work that we are continuing to, um, do and strive to around, um, growing on an intentional partnership and relationship, um, and restorative relationship with the Puyallup Tribe and our tribal neighbors. Um, and the history that, um, Jared shared in his presentation, and then I went to his, um, breakout session as well, it just was really powerful and, and a reminder, um, it's not comfortable work, it's not easy work. Um, and there were a number of people that didn't stay to be a part of the conversation and listen to it. Um, and so it made me feel really grateful that, um, as we've leaned into anti-racist, um, work and practices, um, that we have, there is a team, um, in this district that are leaning in with us. So, um, I just was really reflective on that during, um, that presentation. Um, and then LaCory and I also attended the Large School Caucus, um, meeting. And then I also attended the FRN, the Federal Net Relations Network, um, meeting. And I just don't think it's nice to have meetings during conferences at seven-thirty in the morning. I just don't think that's nice. I filed some, some, you know, complaints about that. Um, but it was really, um, I think what I, I appreciate in be, being in those spaces with colleagues that are doing similar work around the state and just collaborating and learning and growing and strategizing on how do we collectively get better, not just for our own districts, but for all of our students in Washington State. Um, and I find that work to be really meaningful and inspiring. Um, and then, um, I wanted to give a shout-out to our staff, supporting our seniors right now. Um, I know that, um, the stylist staff have been incredibly supportive of my senior. Um, and it's one thing to hear about it as, but, and then to be an apparent living through it. Um, I just know that we have a huge number of staff that are doing everything they can to support, um, our students to whatever that next step is for them beyond high school. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to all of them. Um, and then on, um, Saturday, um, I attended, there was a community event at, um, co-hosted by the Tacoma Rainbow Center and Oasis U Center, um, in, to honor the, um, mass shooting in Colorado Springs at the club, at Club Q. Um, and it was really, um, often in, within the LGBTQ community, when, um, tragedy happens, we come together, um, to just hold space, um, and acknowledge the value that, um, those lost have. Um, and it was really meaningful. We had, um, I think in total, we had, well, there were three city council members there, um, three county council members, um, four county, actually, four city council members. Um, and, and not just, they are not people that identify within the LGBTQ community, which is extraordinarily, um, meaningful, because there was a time not very long ago where no other elected officials would come. Um, and the piece that I really took away from was the, um, I wrote the title down. The US Attorney for Western, the Western Washington District for Washington State, um, uh, Nick Brown was there, and he was one of the speakers. And, um, I've not been in one of these spaces before where someone from the US Attorney's Office came to acknowledge, um, a tragedy within our community. Um, and there were also four FBI agents, um, local FBI agents. And, um, I think that, um, with the heightened, um, hate crimes and they just, um, have continued even throughout this week, um, in our area, um, towards LGBTQ people, um, I, I, it is, it just was really powerful to have people in those, um, positions, just share space with our community. Um, and that, you know, we aren't doing this work alone. And the one ask that the, um, uh, US Attorney had was to report. Report what you see online, and I know that we have been doing that in, you know, talking about the scene, say, see something, say something. Um, but I think just broadly, like, if we see something online that, um, is, you know, like, potentially violent, I think, like, the best thing we can do is report it. Um, and, um, I, I don't see this, um, wave of violence ending in our community anytime soon. Um, it is a trend that is very concerning and it's happening nationwide, um, and we are not, um, uh, protected from it. So I, I just wanted to, um, just acknowledge, like, we don't always get to be in conversation with people from the FBI, um, that are doing that work and also, um, you know, from the US Attorney's Office. And so, and these are people that, you know, are in our community and live in our community, like, in our region, and I just felt, um, very, um, it was very meaningful to have a chance, and I spent some time with all of these folks, um, during the event in conversation, just around safety and around schools and in our community. And what does that look like and how do we do that together? Um, so, and then my last things I'll say is that, um, tomorrow, I'm going to go to the Tacoma Urban Leagues, um, talking to kids about race. And I don't know that that's the title of the event, but that's, um, I'm going to attend that. Um, and then next week, I have, um, a FRN meeting with WASDA as well. And then I might take a nap.
Thank you so much. Uh, Director Leon.
Um, most of us were at the meeting for a career technical education last night, so led by Mr. Coolis. And it was a good overview and mission of the program, um, discussion around the advisory board. So excellent work that they're doing and the, supporting our kids and thinking about, uh, excellent careers. So, good job to that department. Uh, look forward to seeing more good work out of that. Um, the, um, I've been at Mount T a good, uh, amount, um, and one of my residents and I, we were able to do a workshop on ultrasound skills in Ms. Montgomery's Health Careers Class. She, um, runs an amazing health careers class, uh, classroom there, teaching kids all about health careers. So it was a lot of fun having, uh, one of the residents help teach that ultrasound workshop. Um, and then just, uh, thank you again to the Stadium Theater Program, Ms. Jacobson. They just pulled off a wonderful theater production of The Wizard of Oz, and then they're going to be doing The Miserable in the Springs, so try to catch that if you can. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, fabulous. Well, um, I have just a few things to add. One of them, um, is that on, uh, November fifteenth, I attended the United Way From Poverty to Possibilities Conference, which was really powerful. It was, um, it was actually kind of an incredible event. They talked about ALIS, which is, stands for, it's an acronym standing for, uh, Asset Limited Income Constrained but Employed Households. So those are, those are folks that are not getting, um, necessarily getting assistance because they're making just a little too much, and so they're the ones who are literally the sandwich struggler, struggling the most. And so, um, there was a quote from Donna Ponapinto, the CEO of Pierce County United Way, that I loved, I'm not sure if it's hers, but she said it. So it says, "If we want to change the narrative, we need to change the narrator." Um, and it was really interesting just seeing the different perspective, and I think that, um, that's part of, part of that. And then Dr. Karen Johnson, who's, uh, known as Dr. J, she is the Director of Washington State Office of Equity, and she gave an, um, a really great talk, um, about how, you know, we have to restore the middle class and, and all of this, you know, kind of how we all work together to do that. So, um, anyway, it was a great, a great event, and, um, and I think that Superintendent Garcia was, was there. And, uh, is that the one you spoke at? I've been to, no, that was the other one that you did. Okay, that was last week. Way too many meetings. But anyway, it was a great event, and so, um, want to thank the United Way for all the work that they're doing to help be that other piece of the puzzle in our pile about community. And they're doing their work from over here, we're doing it from over here, and we're all supporting these kids. So it's, it, that's how it works. That's how it, that's how it makes it valuable. Um, and I think I, I probably don't need to go into the other things that, that got done, so we'll just stop there. Um, so it, does anybody else have?
Uh, what happens tomorrow morning?
Oh, well, but that's talking about next time. So tomorrow morning is, uh, the last meeting of the year for JMAC, the Joint Municipal Action Committee. And we are actually doing a, um, a special meeting. It's going to be in-person, which is the first one in-person since a year ago. And we've invited, all of, all of you are invited, and hopefully we'll all see you there. And the, um, uh, the, the members of all the boards, of all the members of JMAC, so the City Council, the County Council, uh, the Port of Tacoma, the Pierce Transit Health Department, and Metro Parks Tacoma, and then Tacoma Public Schools and the Puyallup Tribe are all invited, and their CEOs are invited, and it's our, quote, quarterly meeting with the CEOs. But we're really going to be talking about what we've done this year to actually implement, implement the vision that we came up with in twenty twenty-one. Um, and so, and we've had a big year. We've gotten a lot accomplished, and, um, Superintendent Garcia will be there with, uh, Director Stroger's going to be talking about the anti-racism policy that we passed as that piece of the equity and superintendent and team, because others will also, uh, be there to talk to, are going to talk about our apprenticeship programs and, um, the work that we're doing on the Maritime Skill Center and all of the different, um, components. And then there's one other thing you're talking about that I'm forgetting. But anyway, so, um, there are, uh, it's going to be a great day, and we've got, we've invited the community members that attended the Summit of Sixty, um, to join us as well. So we've got elected officials, CEOs, staff, and community partners, and it's going to be an action-packed two hours. Um, so, and that will be the end of my two-year chairmanship of, of JMAC. So that's, it's really kind of a meaningful, uh, day for me. So.
President Brown, I, I would like to quickly remind you of one other piece of work you did in the last few weeks is, uh, the, our partners at the Port of Tacoma made a very significant investment in the future of the South Sound by, uh, identifying their commitment to providing in partnership with us land for a maritime skill center that would help serve all South Sound students. And President Bonbray, uh, did a very gracious job of reaching out to them and thanking them for that. And so that happened, uh, at their public meeting on, I think, the seventeenth of November, and it was a unanimous decision. So we're all very grateful to the Port Commissioners and their investment, and we know we have a long ways to go. Um, but this, this, um, need to develop workforce development, meaningful workforce development and a collaboration with, uh, industry, public schools from all over the South Sound is, is coming up very much alive, uh, so that's an exciting opportunity. So thank you for your leadership, for reaching out and helping guide that.
No, no problem. And I, I'm, you know, it speaks to a lot of the, going back to partnerships, this is our theme tonight, Amanda, but, um, it is really, it speaks to the partnerships that, that Superintendent and, um, has been building over the years, as did Superintendent Santorino, and that we have a lot of trust. And I, I think the community, in Tacoma, the community does own the whole child approach, and they all see their role in it. But I also think that the work that we're doing with JMAC as part of that is the same, I think the Port is very aware of, um, that they have a, a part to play in childcare, and they have a part to play in homeless, uh, prevention and all those things, because everyone does. And I think that if we've done anything this year at JMAC, it's to make sure that elected officials see that they don't have, uh, no one is laser-focused on their one thing. Everybody is open and listening to what everyone else needs and how we, how can we all step up and, and pass public policies that are anti-racism policies that are consistent, or the equity policy, uh, the equity, um, index that the City of Tacoma created now has been adopted by the Pierce County Council, and they've expanded it, so now it's county-wide. And they added, um, um, an equity note, meaning that any decisions made by the county has to now go through this, are, is this, is this investment equitable? Uh, these are huge steps that have been taken forward this year, um, by, by the partners at JMAC, uh, by learning from each other. Um, and that's what we're going to talk about tomorrow. We're going to sort of see what we've all, what this year has, has created. So thank you for bringing that up.
President Bonbray, something I forgot to mention, um, because I think, is this our last, like, public-facing meeting before the holiday break? So there's a lot of resources for clothes for kids. Um, a lot of people, you know, it's getting cold outside, the snow hit, and a lot of our kids didn't have shoes and clothes that they needed. At the People's Center, they've been doing a drive for about four months now. And last month, we donated about fifteen bags of children's clothes, size three T to adult size twelve. Um, and they, they're just asking people, if you need clothes, just stop by and grab them. And the Salvation Army is looking for adult men's socks and sleeping bags.
Okay. Thank you for that. People need stuff. It's true. All right. Does anyone have anything else they want to, for the good of the order, before we go through the, um, list of meetings? Okay. So our next meeting is actually a board retreat, um, on December fifteenth, so next week, we will, uh, we're meeting at five-thirty. Uh, January twelfth will be our first meeting of twenty twenty-three, and it's six PM, a business meeting. And January nineteenth, um, at six PM is a study session. So we're starting the year, you know, in stride, as they say. All right. So thank you, everyone, and since this is the last time, um, we will publicly see you all, I wish you all happy holidays and stay safe and stay warm and enjoy time with your families. And please, 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 take care of yourselves and make time for yourselves. I know this, the, the holidays can be so hectic, and it's important, everyone, take a breath and take care of yourself, and we'll see you back here in January. So have a good holiday. We are adjourned.